...under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, public meeting Tuesday, May 15, 2018. The time is 7:28. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, notice that this meeting was published in the December 14, 2017, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Tucci?
Here.
Commissioner Evans?
Here.
Commissioner Petracca is absent, excused this evening. Mayor Scarpelli?
Here.
All present mayor, except for Commissioner Petracca, he is absent, excused.
Yeah, I just want to have a moment of silence for a second. We lost one of our... He was retired, but he was a longtime employee of the Township and the Department of Public Works. He always had a smile on his face, and everybody loved his meatballs. So we can just have a moment of silence for Frank Berry.
Madam Clerk, minutes?
Yes, Mayor. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for April 17, 2018. We need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Communications?
St. Mary's Church has submitted an application for a social affair permit for St. Anthony's feast event on Friday, June 8, 2018, from 6:00 PM to 12:00 AM at Seventeen Month Senior Owen's Place in Nutley. Said application was approved at a regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Commissioners on May 1, 2018. St. Mary's is requesting to make an amendment to said application to reflect a date change from Friday, June 8, 2018, to Friday, June 22, 2018. I need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Nutley Educational Foundation has submitted an application for a social affair permit for their showcase award event on Thursday, June 21, 2018, from 6:30 PM to 9:30 PM at the Nutley Museum on 65 Church Street. We need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The Green Nutley Committee has submitted an event application to hold a farmer's market 2018 season on Sunday from June 17, 2018, to October 28, 2018, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 537 Franklin Avenue Municipal Lot Number 9. I need a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, I have a sheetroop report for the month of April.
Commissioner Evans?
I have a Code Enforcement Department report for the month of April. Just want to point out that there are 271 permits issued in that month, as well as there were 701 inspections completed in that month.
Commissioner Petracca has a Department of Public Safety report. Bills, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Bill list for May 15, 2018. Public Affairs, $102,399.19. Revenue and Finance, $7,295,992.23. Public Safety, $125,753.46. Public Works, $23,525.66. Parks and Public Property, $77,192.81. Water Utility, $10,904.27. Total Payroll, $837,375.75, for a grand total of $8,473,053.37.
Move the bill.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer or the majority of the membership of the Board shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Does anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only?
Yes. Hi, Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue, regarding agenda item from the bill list. There are two payments to Robert Half. Typically, Robert Half is a staffing agency. They might provide other services, so the total is $6,440.92. And I'm curious as to what services are provided to the Township of Nutley by Robert Half.
They are providing a temporary person in my department for my treasury area. I had turnover in the department. I haven't recruited a person yet, so they're filling in a temporary basis.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing them, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Commissioner Tucci?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this Friday, the 18th, at 6:30, we will be holding our annual Relay for Life. We have an 80 percent projection of rain, so we're moving it inside the gym at the Parks Department, so please, everyone, come and attend and support that. Yesterday was a sad day. I just want to share this with everyone in the Parks Department. And I'm not sure everyone is aware that our aid is still in limbo, and it was, in fact, cut last year, and after a lot of hard work by this entire Board, we got some of it back. So what we had to do in the Parks Department, in addition to not filling three positions and eliminating three temporary positions, we had to give out specific layoff notices to four individuals. And, you know, these are not just folks that we casually talk to. They're part of our family. We feel for them. We're hoping that ultimately the aid will, in fact, come through, and we don't have to eliminate these spots. But in the Parks Department, on an annualized basis, we're looking at a reduction of about 400,000, of which we'll probably realize half of that this year because they go into effect on the 30th. And I believe everyone understands the gravity of the situation and what we all have done and what we need to do and continue to do to try and keep our taxes affordable and keep Nutley an affordable place for families. But I would just ask everyone to keep the Township in your good wishes and in your intentions, and hopefully the state will come through with some additional aid, and we can make our family whole again. Thank you, Mayor. That's all I have for now.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to call everybody's attention to two things. One, at the June... Alany, June 7th meeting?
Yes.
At the June 7th meeting, first meeting in June, Ed Brown, who is our tax assessor, will be here to share with the Board of Commissioners how the tax assessor executed what is known as a compliance plan for the Township in prior years, roughly in the 2011, '12, '13 timeframe, and in some cases, right up through 2017. The reason for that is to help people understand why land values have been adjusted in order to reduce the overall valuation of the Township from its very peak of 4.3 billion in 2006 to its current value of 3.3 billion. The reason why we're doing this, and I'm raising it, is because there is misinformation that's out on social media sites. And when Commissioners are being confronted and being asked to basically have statements saying, "You have a lot of explaining to do because a social media site is suggesting that somehow the Commissioners were involved in having their taxes reduced," in effect suggesting that somehow that was done inappropriately, then we need to actually respond so that people understand that there is integrity within the Board of Commissioners. So our cards are faced up. All of the work that is done by the tax assessor is done under the control of the SS County Tax Board. Compliance plans are authorized by the state under state statute. And just a simple fact is, in order to reflect an overall change in the market value of a property, when you don't do a revaluation, which allows you to get access to every single property, the only way you can reflect that adjustment in one's overall evaluation is specifically to adjust the land value, because that's the only thing that's consistent across what they call tax neighborhoods. For each of the Commissioners, the neighborhoods that we're talking about aren't about one, two, three, four, five homes. We're talking about several hundred homes within each one of the neighborhoods where the tax neighborhoods where the Commissioners reside. So when we are being challenged because people somehow think there is something wrong, and the people that are raising that actually have had their own properties' land value adjusted using the same process, then I think it's valuable to spend the time here in chambers. So my point is, is that on June 7, the tax assessor will be here. I also want to call people's attention to the fact is that tax records are public documents and are available, so anyone who wants to ask the question should feel free anytime to go to the tax assessor's office and have a full explanation to their satisfaction. We do that as a matter of course for everyone and anyone in the Township. So June 7. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to amplify a little bit about what Commissioner Tucci and Commissioner Evans just said. We are in a very, very, very critical situation with regard to where this town is going to be going in the years to come. In fact, we're at a crossroads, something I would have never imagined, sitting here on this board for the past few years. The question is, why are we at this crossroads? We're the first line of government, municipal government, that people come in contact with, and unfortunately, we get the blame for everything, and, well, that's part of the job. But the problem's taxes, high taxes. We, as a municipal government, don't control most of those taxes. And yet, people will blame us, and they'll blame conditions here in town, and they'll ask us to do things that I thought would have been unthinkable years ago. See these pictures on the walls here? These are our leaders that sat in these seats before us. And they worked so very, very hard to do a few things uniquely to this Township. First and foremost, to maintain the services that we have. Nutley is famous, is famous, and an attractive town for the services we have. I was in a town months ago, and there was an incident where people needed the police. It took 22 minutes for a police car to arrive. I go to Manhattan just about every day, and, you know, I look out the window of one of those tall buildings, and I hear sirens on the street, caught in traffic. Somebody may be having a heart attack. They can't get to the hospital. I talk to people that have beautiful parks like ours. They can't walk in those parks, so they come to Nutley to walk in our parks because they're maintained, they're beautiful parks, and the chances of you getting mugged in a Nutley park is almost zero, which talks to the issue of public safety. I had a drunk driver, 3 o'clock in the morning, a couple weeks ago, landed on my front lawn. You think about looking out your window, not knowing who's in that car. And I was going to go out there with my dog. I got a nice German Shepherd who could do a lot of damage, but my wife said, "You know what? What if somebody's in that car with a gun? That's either stop you or your dog." I picked up the telephone, and I've got to tell you, before I put that phone down, there were four police cars in front of my house. That's not happening in communities not far from here. I think it's great that in our town, when people call us, they... Look, every problem's in the eye of the beholder, and I'm not going to diminish anybody's issues when they call us, whether it be to catch an animal that's bothering people, or to fix a faucet, or whatever they have to do. But I've been around a long time, and I think it's great that people in this town could still call for those issues other than calling about gunfire on your street, calling about drug dealers on your corner, calling about the Latin Kings and the Crips taking over and taking complete control of your neighborhoods. There's a reason that's not happening here. I think it's great when a senior citizen could call my Health Department, and we're able to send a doctor or a nurse right to their home and to help them out. I think it's great when we have massive storms come through here. And, look, I've heard it from people all over this state. You travel to Nutley after a storm, it's like the storm never hit because of what Public Works does. And this man here, Commissioner Tucci, an unintended consequence of what he does is he's really had a war on drugs. He's had a war on drugs for a long time, and I don't think you realize it until I shared that with you. Because he... And you see your parents here, and your coaches here, and the uniqueness of this town? They have worked very hard to get young people involved in programs to keep them away from trouble, and the peer pressure that delivers that trouble. So when I hear people talk about high taxes, I get it, and I know my colleagues get it. The Commissioner of Revenue and Finance, you should Google this guy's name, find out who he worked for. One of the largest financial corporations on the face of the earth. And the fellow who's not sitting here, he's busy tonight, Commissioner Petracca with some personal business. He's maintained a police department that I served 38 years on. And somehow, folks, just somehow, when I look at his reports about the crime rate not going up... So my point is this: We're at a very critical crossroads in our town, and these fellows... And I saw it in you. I'm watching you, Commissioner Tucci, as you're speaking. And I just sense it was a struggle because of... And it's a struggle, and I know it's a struggle for everyone up here. But you know what's on our mind when we go to sleep at night? And I mean this: We don't want to change the character of this town. We don't want to cut services. Chief John Holland and I rode around this town for years, and when we went through other towns, we said, "How did this happen? How did this community fall apart? How did the crime go up? How do kids, they can't even walk to school anymore, not far from here?" And it all began, folks, when we began to cut services. It all began when those communities saved how much, Commissioner Evans, our municipal budget, how much? Peanuts. So my point is this: I would ask all of you, and young people who are here tonight, and I know you're here for another reason, but, look, I don't say much at these meetings anymore, but I'm going to... I like to seize the opportunity when I could. Use your talents and skills and the education you get to get involved. Get involved in government, get involved in knowing who your elected officials are, your state officials. Get involved, and make your voice be heard, because what we do up here is going to determine your future. And when we're gone, I'm going to be gone in two years from here, and there's going to be somebody else sitting here, and they're going to have to make the same decisions that I've had to make and these gentlemen had to make. So I would ask you, as Commissioner Tucci said, keep the best wishes of our town on your minds, but also pray for our town. I still believe in a God who answers prayers, and he's had his hands on this town for a long time. That's my speech. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll just add that if you have a question about anything going on in the town, call us, email us, stop in our place of business. We're available. I'm in the shop right every Sunday shopping. You see me there, you can ask me any kind of question you want, and I'm sure I speak for the rest of the Commissioners. We'll answer. There's nothing being hidden here. We're all up front. As Commissioner Evans, I think, said, we all have the cards faced up. One other announcement is that the county will be having electronic recycling on Saturday up at 125 Fairview. So let's move to ordinance introductions. This is an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2017, non-union employees. I move this ordinance to be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held on a second reading on June 19, 2018. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner, you want to do the other one?
Sure. This is an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers and employees of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, January 1, 2017, to the end of the year, being ordained by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex, New Jersey, as follows, and this is the salary ordinance for Teamsters Local 97, which covers the employees in the Parks Department and in the Department of Public Works. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners to be held at its second reading on... What's that date, Alany?
June 19.
June 19. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
Commissioner, continue with resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I do this resolution every... Pretty much every year, and it's a wonderful resolution. It pretty much makes my year, all right? It's one of the high spots, and every year when we think our ladies can't do any better, they surprise us, and they do better, and they just keep going and going, and you are absolutely the best of what Nutley has to offer, and we are so proud and grateful to you, not only for being great basketball players, but for being great ladies and great Nutley citizens. So having said that, I am very proud to offer this resolution. Whereas the Nutley Girls 8th Grade Traveling Basketball Team has enjoyed an outstanding season, posting an overall record of 13 wins and one loss, and a four-year overall record, which is unbelievable, of 55 wins and one loss. And whereas the members of the Nutley Girls 8th Grade Traveling Basketball Team, excuse me, are Rebecca Etcheverria, Rachel Etcheverria, Mackenzie Albert, Alexandra Toomey, Julia Scheidel, Leah DeMayo, Natalie Raffino, Mia Garrity, Sidney Hess, Patricia Columbia Walsh, Alyssa Bartelovich, Stephanie Liberto, Jenna Gardner, and whereas head coach Joyce Bukowicz along with assistant coach Dave Scheidel worked tirelessly to train and guide these athletes, and obviously, the fruits of their labor is coming through loud and clear. And whereas the members of the Girls 8th Grade Basketball Team were the suburban travel basketball division and league champions for the fourth year in a row with a record of 13-1, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex join with the citizens of Nutley to honor and congratulate the members and coaches of the Girls 8th Grade Basketball Team for their exceptional efforts and accomplishments. I very proudly move this resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers?
Well, very proud of you. That's very, very impressive, and I thank your parents and you and the coaches. That's really impressive. I vote yes.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Congratulations. Well done. Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Congratulations to the coaches, the parents, and the girls. And I say this whenever I have young people here who play sports together, and they've been together for a long time. Look at the people that you're sitting next to. Those are the people that you're going to be friends with 20, 30, 40 years from now. Going through sports, sacrificing, winning, losing, crying, that's what it's all about, and they're going to be friends a long time. Congratulations, girls.
Commissioner?
Ladies and coaches, would you please come forward for a photo? We also have with us tonight, excuse me, a banner that will be hung in the gym at the Parks Department honoring this team.
Great.
Congratulations. Oh, you guys are... Congratulations. All right. Congratulations. Oh, you guys are... Congratulations. All right. 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 Congratulations.[1615.28]
Ladies and coaches, would you please come forward for a photo? We also have with us tonight, excuse me, a banner that will be hung in the gym at the Parks Department honoring this team. Guys, go ahead, Coach.
Well, I love Nutley. I've been here, I think I've been to Nutley more than where I was once. So, I've been here much longer. I love Nutley. I definitely don't want to leave. I don't even care about taxes. Me and Dave just now we were talking, and he's like, I don't even think about taxes. I love Nutley. So, we love Nutley. Anyway, I want, I just want to say how extraordinary these girls are, and to be undefeated, we lost our last game of our regular season, okay? So, for four straight years, they carried perfection. It's not easy for a young girl to have that, and we say 54-1, and all I hear, 55-1, all I hear is the one. Believe me, it's like a torture for me, but I have to say, girls, when you lose, it's a great thing because you learn something really big that day. So, being undefeated, that's one thing, but losing, we figured out how to win. We had to win the next two games by losing. We, I came to practice the next day, and I said, I don't know how to beat a 1-3-1. I just don't know how to beat it. Like that, I go, but I'm going to call somebody that knows. And I called somebody that coached in the WODA, and I asked her, what's your best offense against a 1-3-1? I came in the next day, and I'm like, I have a plan. I have a plan. And it was boring for six straight days, six straight days. That's all we did was to plan, and it was boring, and they seemed a little frustrated. All I kept saying was, trust the plan. Just trust the plan. And we got the game, and we hammered the team that beat us. I mean, these girls are extraordinary. They rose to the top, and I want to say we beat them without one of our best players, which is extraordinary, because everyone's stuff I did to make that happen. It was, it was an amazing epic win, and it was an epic, epic fight. So, I just want to say thank you so much for honoring them. They're all really, really great young ladies, and I said, they're great, it's awful and soft, or two, so.
Not yet, it's seven.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you so much.
Girls, you're welcome to stay, or you could take a couple minutes to head out.
Did take a walk.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas the Township of Nutley entered into contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants, PO Box 3009, Upper Montclair, New Jersey, for groundwater investigation services, and whereas the Director of Parks and Public Property, that's me, has recommended the following change order from said contract. Change order number one, Groundwater Investigation Services, 228 Chestnut Street, in the amount of $2,428.39, and the Tremont Garage in the amount of $8,006.14, whereas funds are available from Capital Ordnance 3372D, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer. Said certification being attached to this resolution, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that change order number one, in the amount of $11,042.39, be and is hereby approved. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Commissioner Evans?
Whereas Michael Duvall located 189 Center Street, Nutley, New Jersey, has submitted an application to make interior alterations, and whereas the cost of the permit fee for interior alterations was collected in the amount of $52, and said amount was deposited in account C01904903, and whereas the Township has offered to refund the municipal permit fee of $40 from said account to Mr. Michael Duvall, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex, that all permit fees related to Michael Duvall be refunded as stated. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer be and she is hereby authorized to refund overpayment of tax charges in the amount of $7,848.23 for the lots and blocks that are listed in this resolution. So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Whereas a raffle application has been received from the following organization, Rotary Club of Nutley, license number 19-18 Off-Premise Cash Raffle, to be held Thursday, August 9th, 2018, whereas the application has been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned license is approved, Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue the raffle license. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas sealed bids for surplus equipment no longer in use by the Township will receive and open on Wednesday, April 18th, 2018, and whereas Marshacks, Inc., 247 Central Avenue of Batuchan, New Jersey, was the sole bidder in the equipment and vehicles as listed below, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey, that Township Clerk be as hereby authorized, accept and offer from Marshacks, Inc., 247 Central Avenue of Batuchan, New Jersey. Move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
My third resolution, we're going to hold, we're going to open the meeting to the public, and then we're going to go into executive session. We will come back from executive session and take action on that resolution. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board. Dialogue between citizens and others addressing the Board shall be allowed unless the Mayor or presiding officer, the majority of the membership of the Board, shall determine that the interests of the quorum and/or the expeditious conduct of municipal business are being adversely affected by such dialogue.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Amy Salento, 70 Newman Avenue. Mayor, we've been in contact regarding the municipal parking meters here in town. The munimeeters, I guess the referred to, the centralized meters.
Excuse me? Can you speak up a little bit, Amy?
Sure. The centralized meters, the munimeeters, and that they are still not accepting credit cards or payment cards, and it's my understanding that there are some restrictions in terms of governmental agencies in each town using more than one merchant services provider. So, if I understand from our previous conversations, the town's merchant services provider handles tax billing or tax payments, water payments, I think municipal court fees and fines, but they can't handle these, I guess, electronic payments for the munimeeters. So, I know that you said that this has been submitted to the DCA and that they haven't responded. It just seems like, is there a way to push that forward? Because the meters are there, you have to have quarters. I mean, it's 2018, and if people don't have enough quarters to put in for the amount of time that they need, then they have to go get changed, they have to go back to the parking lot, you know? I mean, it's a big song and dance, just to park your car and avoid getting in traffic.
And we understand that, Ms. Salento, and we're working to resolving that issue.
Okay, and I know we did speak about this, and I appreciate you responding to my emails on it. Do you think there's a timeline to resolve the issue?
I can't give you a timeline, though.
Okay. Thank you. Additionally, I think that, you know, the conversation that took place in the pre-meeting and then what's been addressed here in terms of a tax presentation, the tax assessment presentation, that would be fantastic, so it's great it's being announced now that it will take place at the June 7th meeting. Maybe there could be like a newsletter article that gets posted on the town's website, following on from the meeting, or even in advance of the meeting, because there aren't that many people who are able to come to these meetings, you know, whether it's their schedule or their interest, but it seems like it's an interesting topic, and to the points made in the pre-meeting and subsequent, you know, social media is a viable option for people to communicate, you know? It's happening around the world, around the globe, can even swing elections possibly, and, you know, people do, you know, it's sort of like armchair quarterbacking. It's like you can sit in your office, in your car, on the bus, and make notes and post them on Facebook, and you can see that people get frustrated. So, I don't know, it just seems like maybe the opportunity to increase transparency and make an effort to publish information such as is going to be shared would be well received by the citizens. So, I'm just throwing that out there. And then, I'm not sure if I can ask questions related to the proposed budget that's announced, Mayor, or is that?
Sure.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much. So, for 2018 as compared to 2017, there's zero in the column on pending tax appeals, which looked like it was a revenue line. In 2017, it was 346,596. So far, I've only seen tax appeals going the other way, in terms of money that we're refunding or reducing. So, I'm just wondering if something has changed in how this is reported, or tracked, or anticipated.
Exactly. We have established reserve for risks associated with tax appeals. The most significant one is the pending tax appeal with Prism, which is the company that took over the Hoffler Row site. Last year, when the state notified us very late in the year that they were reducing our aid by $1.8 million, we only had one tax quarter to actually absorb that, that loss of state aid. There was no way to, you know, to, in effect, look at it initially to argue that we could absorb all of that, so one, we went back to the state and argued with them, and we got an increase in our aid. To close the gap for last year so that the taxpayers did not get a huge tax bill, which was $1 million, part of the money that we used to offset that tax increase last year was to take the reserve for pending tax appeals, and with the approval of the state, reduce that reserve by the amount of money that you see in 2017. It's not in 18 because it's a one-time revenue adjustment, and we can't use it twice. So, what happened is, and it's a related question to what you just asked, is, and a very important one, is because we made that one-time adjustment last year, and we haven't been notified that we're going to get that, all that aid money back, we have to figure out how to absorb that loss of revenue in 2018. And when we introduced the budget, we went through a pretty extensive discussion on what the steps taken by this Board to, in effect, address the loss of aid. In fact, one of the things we saw tonight was Commissioner Tucci announced some layoffs in his departments. There were other things that happened as well, in terms of positions where someone retired, and the position was frozen, so through attrition, you're seeing those adjustments being, being made. We're still waiting for approval from the state on the amount of aid we're going to get this year. The, so far, you know, knock on wood, the discussions have been positive, and I hope that some of that money that we lost will be restored. I can't say exactly because the state itself hasn't struck a budget yet, and they won't do so until, do so until July. So, we introduced, we held a public hearing, but we can't adopt until we get the information. So, to your point, you'll see a revenue, one revenue item to help off, offset that loss from last year.
Thank you. If I may ask a related question, same line item or same section, reimbursement for school crossing guards, reimbursement, sorry, for school crossing guards. 2017, there was a $476,000 number, but nothing in 2018.
Correct. The other aspect of offsetting that loss of revenue was coordination with the school, School Board, where they agreed to reimburse the municipality for the cost of the school crossing guards, which is an amount of $467,000 each year for school crossing guards, for the Township, for all of our, our school needs. So, they reimbursed us last year and took money out of reserves on their side to, in effect, offset that loss. We do not have that same ability to do that again this year. So, the same concept, except it's not a tax reserve requiring state approval, it was cooperation between the School Board and the municipality.
Okay, so then we don't expect that to continue, obviously, in the 2018 budget and possibly beyond. So, the Township is absorbing that expense?
Well, so far, you know, we've done quite a bit to absorb the tax loss and the tax increases. What I discussed at the hearing, the public hearing and prior, was that we were facing in the fall a $2.9 million increase. Today, we are looking at an increase of about $4 million, $1,400 and change, almost 1.5 million. So, we were able to, through cuts, not only in some cases in headcount, in some cases consulting costs, you know, everywhere we could find a way to reduce spending, we, we looked at that as part of a review that we, we did this, this particular year in more, in a more exhaustive way. The items that comprise the tax increase so far is basically four major items. The first is that under state statute, we cannot anticipate the full amount of the aid that we received the prior year. We only can anticipate 85% of it. So, the 15% is $551,000 of that $1.45 million. We also had an increase in our sewer bill from Passaic Valley Sewer Authority of $194,000. We also had an increase in our pension bill from the state of $389,000. And the last thing is, you know, contrary to what a lot of people were believed, we actually had a shortfall in our water utility arising from lower revenues in the water utility related to lower consumption, and that was $343,000. If you add those numbers up, that's where we are right now. We haven't struck a budget yet. We're hoping that one, will one, be able to anticipate the $551,000, which means we'll get $3.6 million in aid, which is the same amount we got last year, and if we're fortunate and that aid is increased, it'll further offset those, those items of increase. When those bills comes in, come in, it's very difficult to find a way to absorb them because it's not that, it's not that you can absorb it one year. Those bills are, are repeat bills, so it becomes very hard. Does that help?
That does help. Thank you for addressing so much about the anticipated aid and, and the percentages. Just one other question, the Hurricane Sandy Reserve from FEMA is estimated to be, or budgeted at this point, to be $102,297. How many years will that continue, that reserve? It's actually surprising that there's a reserve.
Yeah, it's the delay with the federal government. So, all of our paperwork is in. There's nothing that is, it's all we've met with all the compliance requirements. We're just waiting.
Okay, so we don't know if that will continue for...
It may continue. It may be resolved this year, it may, may be resolved next year. I hope it's resolved, you know, this year. It's long overdue.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salento. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Tammy Rossi, 28 Colonial Terrace. Mayor Scarpelli, with the last Board of Commission meeting, I had brought up the definition for mixed-use density, and if it would be heard, and you said probably at the next meeting, and...
So, the Planning Board Committee was invited to this meeting or a future meeting. They couldn't make tonight, they will be at our next meeting, which is June 7th.
So, then that's, that's, you're basically following also the request from Diamond Springs for you to hold off until after May 30 at...
That's nothing to do with anything.
I, I certainly hope, as a very concerned citizen, that this finally does get resolved. 10 years is a long time, and developers have been getting every variance approved in town, and people in town are very concerned about the overdevelopment of apartments in these mixed-use buildings.
We're all concerned about that.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing none, we need a motion to go into executive session. Sure.
I'd be remiss if I didn't say this. Commissioner Petrakko isn't here this evening because he has a, a family medical emergency, so I would just ask everyone to please keep Vincent Petrakko, one of Al's sons, in your prayers. He's having surgery tomorrow, and I would, I would ask everyone to pray for a successful surgery and a very speedy recovery. He's a wonderful young man. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Have a motion to go into executive session. To Mr. Jenna Temple to discuss...
Litigation and contract negotiations. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the, the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley and the County of Essex State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, and now therefore be a resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, move into closed executive session to discuss litigation and contract negotiations. Be it further resolved at a time when such discussion may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and as such disclosure may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending and/or anticipated legal, personnel, contractual matters, and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. Commissioner Rogers.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the time is 8:16.
Just as a reminder, we will be coming back on the record to vote on Resolution 132-18, and then we will close the meeting.